Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Make sure that's...
I can hear you great. Wow.
All right, check, check. This is the microphone that is Zoom only and will be used by the city clerk.
I can hear it just fine.
Awesome. Now, this is the microphone that is going to be heard in the room. It sounds like I need to turn my gain up on this one a little bit here. Okay, something a little funny is going on with this one here. I need to check a couple of things. Check, check. Testing, one, two, three.
Yeah, that sounds good.
You can hear that all right?
Yep.
Okay. And finally, this is the other microphone. So this is microphone number three that will also be heard in the room. How does that one sound to you?
That one sounds good as well.
All right, let's just go back to that first microphone again here. And now I'm back to the first microphone. How does this one sound compared to the other two?
That one sounds clear. I can hear it loud. I think, go to the second one.
All right, now we're listening to the second one here.
Yeah, that one's a little softer. I can still hear you and understand you, but it's a little softer.
Yeah, this one is a lot softer. I'll need to, uh, let's see here. This could stand for some tinkering. Well, cool, thank you, sir. All right, which one is this going into? Check, 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 check. Not that one. Check, check. That one, all right. Check, check. Testing, one, two, three.
Still soft.
This is microphone A. Microphone A, testing, one, two, three.
I feel like that's softer than it was earlier.
And this is microphone B. Microphone B, testing, one, two, three.
They sound the same.
Pardon?
They sound the same.
Excellent, thank you.
Hey, go on.
All right, one more thing. I took away a little bit of low end muddiness on these two. So this is microphone A. This is microphone B. And this is the clerk's microphone, microphone C, which is only being heard by Zoom. Are these three roughly the same level?
Microphone C is the loudest.
All right, so I'm just going to turn this down a little bit. How's that? This is microphone C and this is microphone B.
I think that's good. Go, but do it one more time.
This is microphone C. And this is microphone B.
They're very close, but C is still a tad louder.
All right, as long as we're in the ballpark and all three is eligible, I think we will be pretty good.
I think we're good.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Brad, don't let these two in. I think we're gonna move.
I don't sing. You don't want me singing. Testing, one, two. You can't hear me. Hello? Can you hear me? Can you hear me? I don't, can you hear me? Does it sound like I'm talking through it? Oh, okay. So you can hear me okay then? Okay. Sorry, I was yawning. I don't know if there's actually a signed seat.
Hi, Robin.
Hey, how are you, bro?
Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Check, check. Testing, one, two, three.
Thank you. Well, you're official, girl. There you go. Yep, that's okay. You said I had him come up to the office, though. Well, they were scattered everywhere. Andrew was sworn in as mayor.
Yeah.
She came in one night. Her whole family was there. Took pictures.
Yeah.
It was, and then she, I don't know if you, I wasn't there when they did it. It was, it was like... It just happened really fast and it, like, my kids were in school and, you know what I mean? Like, so I, yeah. I should understand. Yeah. Happened kind of fast, but, yeah. Otherwise, I think they probably would have been there. Well, if you ever decide you want to do it, we can always do it.
We'll do some pomp and circumstance.
There you go. And I really just came right from work, so I have, like, I didn't care. You look fine. Thanks. You look great. I don't have a suit on, so... Do you know which seat will be mine? I don't. I think they offered the seats they had last time. We'll see. Mary was there.
Yeah.
Gordon, do you know, do you know where, do you know, you were asking me earlier where to sit her? Do you guys have a seat up there for her?
I think so, yeah. I think I know one right there.
Well, the little one. That one's very... You get the hot, you get the heat. Right off the bat.
No, I think, or there.
Yeah.
Hey, Brad? It's okay if Kelly sits in this one? Okay, well, you were there before. It was just a shorter table. Yeah.
As long as you all play nice.
How are you?
How are you? Well, it's ready as you can be. I mean, every day there's new issues that come up, but now it's, uh... The state's saying they cannot carry a diamond to the polls. But now attorneys are saying, well, it's state law. You can't keep them from carrying their weapon. So now it's going back and forth between attorneys and then they're, I don't know. State becomes the problem if it answers about... You can't prohibit that because it's the law. Just don't, you say to Michigan, suppose you can, so...
Well, it's the state law. If it was, I guess they could put a temporary, oh, that'll really upset you. Gun owners are about to cry. You know, you know Al Britton, right?
Is he the hearing? No, that's not, that's both for, no, I don't think I do.
Well, I think you... Probably would. You know Larry Stephan?
I don't know my face.
Al told me that his friend, Larry Stephan, is a conspirious, conspiracy theorist. And he got in your face at the fairgrounds about his vote, that wasn't going to get counted. He was sure. You know what I'm talking about? That guy.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
Al said he got you so upset.
Yeah, because he started saying in front of all of our voters that F and T ballots don't count, that we changed the votes I won. He said that was one of the points.
I know, I know.
All right, it's six oh two, so I'm going to call to order the pre-meeting study session for the Adrian City Commission, Monday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gouse. Commissioner Castleberry. All commission members present.
And our city administrator, Greg Elliott, I will hand it over to you.
Dustin. So our first item on the pre, so see if I can do as well as I told others to do in holding the microphone up close. Our first item on the pre-meeting agenda tonight is a discussion of cost of living increase for non-union employees. Some of our employees are in unions, and so this has been a given for them for this fiscal year. But our non-uni- Ah, it's, I would say a few dozen. Okay, well, I know they would all appreciate that, and if we could add that done at the beginning of the agenda, that'd be great. So our next item is a discussion of where we're going to have meetings in the future. I thought it would be good to hash that out. We actually had some items that we were gonna, that weren't time critical, but that we were gonna put on the agenda tonight that we didn't put on the agenda because we weren't a hundred percent sure what the location of public hearings would be. This works nicely. I, I know many of you have felt, but it's, it displaces some other things in the one sense. There's a church that holds their services here on Sundays and perhaps other days as well. This is their riser that some of you are sitting on, and it normally has a bunch of band equipment on it. All these speakers and lights are all theirs, and they have another setup that goes in, in front here as part of their program, and so every time we come in, we have to move all their stuff out, or they have to, actually. They, that's their deal with the Armory. And of course, the seating arrangement is entirely different for us than it is for them. And so it's, it's disruptive to them. That's one thing to consider. I'm not saying that's a deal killer for this place because, because it's not. That's, that's the deal with the Armory. But it's also true, we've got the Zoom feed going really well right now, but that's dependent upon equipment we've borrowed from others that we don't own. And so that's been an imposition on both the Armory and Drake Lally has been nice enough to, I'll call it a mixer box that he's lent us, for lack of a better term, because I don't know what it's called, but it's the thing that allows us to interface through the PA system with Zoom successfully. And prior to having that, it was very unsuccessful in terms of the sound quality. And Mary, you'll remember the DDA meeting that we had where we did not have that, and the DDA members who were listening on Zoom couldn't hear anything we were saying in the room. So there are some drawbacks to using this location. As you probably know, the Open Meetings Act was amended, the governor signed that legislation, so we, at least for the balance of this year, are able, for any reason, to continue to have virtual meetings, remote meetings like we were having on Zoom. That's authorized at least through the end of the year. There's some other conditions which may allow it and then through next year as well. So that's a consideration, but I'll throw that out there for you all to discuss. And obviously, we'll do whatever the commission's bidding is in that regard.
So we can't use something like Peter Center or something because of the Zoom? Is that why, like, our own building where we could just leave it set up?
Well, there's no PA system in the Peter Center, and so if we were to go back to, for example, only having in-person meetings and not allowing participation by Zoom, that would be one thing, and it's a large space that can accommodate quite a number of people, similar to what this space can physically accommodate. But I think that to interface with Zoom, if that's a goal, or any kind of live streaming of the event, even if, even if it's not interactive, there are challenges at the Peter Center because they don't have a PA, PA system there.
If the commission were lined up along that wall facing west, and the chairs out here were configured in such a way, I mean, you could still get a number of people in here, and you may not displace the group that owns this riser.
Yeah, that, again, that's an, it's an option if we don't want to try to interface with Zoom, but to have the PA system working, and again, I mean, here's another point. We're sharing microphones, so we don't have enough microphones for everybody. You know, that, therein lies the challenge with the equipment we have for this space and the lack of any equipment for other spaces. I mean, in one way, it'd be better to go, if we wanted a big room, to the Peter Center, which, where we're not displacing anyone, where, you know, we have control over that space. That is, again, an option. It's not as big, so we can't accommodate as many people socially distanced as we can here. The microphones there are fixed, so to keep the commissioners socially distanced and have each of them have a microphone, we'll have to come up with something else as it relates to being able to be heard, again, if you want to be heard by those at home. You would be too close together if you were all behind the dais. So you recall the last meeting that we did there that was post-pandemic. As I recall, not all of you were up on the dais at that meeting, and some, some were down, and staff, of course, was down below as well. I, I don't think you could all fit behind there with six feet between you. We, we could measure that. We haven't, we haven't measured it, as far as I know. Maybe, maybe Michelle has. No.
Isn't it a problem with Zoom, no matter where we go? Like, we're gonna have to buy some equipment or do something? I, I was under that impression, but I could be wrong.
Well, this setup right here is working pretty well, I think, but, like I say, it's not our equipment, and so we just can't keep borrowing the equipment forever. We had a quote at one time to do just live streaming from chambers, and I want to say that was about ten thousand dollars for the equipment that we needed to do that.
Fifteen in the pre-meeting room and five in the front conference room was what Matt figured out for us a couple of weeks ago before we chose this venue. The concern was that means that once you get commission and staff, that even if it was just the seven of you and the three of us, that takes ten people, you could have your department heads come in virtually on Zoom, so that that would limit the number of physical bodies in the chambers, but it would leave you about twenty-seven spaces, which would seem like it would be okay until someone shows up who's number twenty-eight, at which case, in speaking with like the county commission, what their plan was is if they reached the maximum number and the next person came in, they would have to immediately adjourn the meeting and reschedule it, which is why we chose to say we wanted to move you guys here last week until we could figure out something more long-term, because we didn't want you to find yourselves in that situation of having to suddenly adjourn and reschedule. There's been a lot of meetings canceled, right? And, and then using larger venues, and then some of them already have had the live stream equipment prior to this, so I'd say some of them are doing that as well, and then I'll let Greg elaborate on what other ones he's heard.
Yeah, I think, I don't, I don't specifically know this week since, since the authority has been back, but I, I, you know, my sense was that those who canceled were waiting to see if the OMA amendments were going to pass, and then they would go back to doing virtual as they had them.
I, I, I agree with Commissioners, Commissioner Hilton, Commissioner Watson. I don't know who, what expertise we have at City Hall. People would know how to design a system and put it in and know what we would have to bid out, or do we really want, need to bid it, because we want to do it very quickly. Maybe Mr. Lally could help us kind of specify what we need to put together a system that we could use, you know, that we would own, instead of keeping, you know, borrowing everybody's, just thought.
I would personally like to get back to our own, like, the city chambers, and I would like that as well. I know we were concerned about numbers. I'm kind of curious to see what happens tonight in the regular meeting. I just counted twenty-one right now, if I was counting right, and there was a few more than that the other night because I was trying to count during that meeting. But no matter what, I definitely agree that we just need to see what this is going to cost, and I, I feel like this is going to be the future anyways. Like, we need to get these capabilities to be able to do the Zoom and, you know, and bring people in, because I, I just feel like there's, there's people that are not going to be comfortable still coming out to a meeting that want to contribute and be involved, and, or maybe they become positive. I mean, one of us could, and I know we can be, you know, zoomed in, but it could be the same problem. You know, God forbid one of us gets sick and that we have to zoom in. But I feel like we need to have those capabilities, and, and we need to look at what that's going to cost and, and at least get those numbers, and so that we can digest that and start looking at that and figuring that out.
Tamara, what would we do if we were in chambers and we reached the fire marshal's limit? On an average day?
I would say that we would have to adjourn the meeting as well because we couldn't ask someone not to attend a public meeting. That's what the issue is, that under the OMA, we have to give them the right to attend.
And that includes even if we have other channels that have interact, where you can interact in real time, live, it still applies that every single person that wants to has to be able to enter.
At this time, it does, yes. I say at this time because I think somewhere down the road, as all these changes keep happening, we may see something come up with that, but right now, yes.
And nothing's available that we could, people could, in essence, reserve their seats so you wouldn't have to come to chambers to find out that you're guest 28?
We don't have anything in place to do that, but I think we could probably brainstorm about, about something like that. But at the same time, if they reserved it and then all those people reserved and then number 28 showed up, we would still face the same issue with the OMA violation. We couldn't say to them, well, you didn't make a reservation, so you can't come in because it's a public meeting.
Can you do an overflow room like you do at other places? Because I know I've been to venues before where if you can't get in to an auditorium to hear a speaker, there's like a, there's like an overflow room where you can watch it, you know, via Zoom or whatever it might be, and participate that way. Is that an option?
Those, I mean, those probably weren't public meetings that were subject to the Open Meetings Act. But I've been familiar with public meetings that have overflowed. But, you know, you, in the situations I'm thinking of, they just opened it out into a larger space and all the people were still able to attend. They were just farther away from where the action was. So, I mean, it looks like there are some things for us to study. Maybe the simpler question is where do we want to have our next meeting?
I like Commissioner Stur's suggestion of being in here. We don't want to disturb, continue to disturb the church's setup. And just flipping how we do things, asking Mr. Lally if we can use his equipment at least for one more meeting. And that hopefully by that time, we can work things out for the chambers instead. That would be my suggestion.
I think that, you know, Matt being here is awesome, but I mean, I'd be comfortable with him. We've done it for six months with him sitting at home and, and we could ask him questions or will or whoever it may be. So I just think that we need to start, and borrowing equipment, we're the county seat. We should be borrowing, I mean, we should have our own stuff. I mean, it's a, let's, little capital investment. Let's make it crisp and clear and let's move forward. I mean, that's.
What about, there's a number of auditoriums in our city. I mean, we've got two colleges with performing centers. We've got a Crosswell and Adrian Public Schools. Have we reached out to any of them? Because that would also address the microphone concerns of passing a microphone. I'm assuming they have more than seven or eight microphones.
No, we, as far as I know, we have not reached out to any of those facilities at this time. You know, if we can, if we can set the next meeting for this space and then do, do our homework on what it's going to take to get functional on our own. At least that allows us to move forward with, with some public hearings that we need to have. And we'll perhaps have more information for you next time.
I just need to know for planning purposes. So are you looking for a setup just to stream to the public? Or are you looking for a setup with what we're doing now so that the public can actually participate in public comment through Zoom and continue to do, to do that? That's what you're looking for? Okay.
Participatory.
Thank you.
Anything else on that item? We got some direction. So the next, I wanted to update you on some things that are going on with interest in our two major property holdings, the Marvin Farm and the, and the Whit Farm. I'm gonna share something on the screen up here, I hope. So. Do that one first. Scroll up some. So purchasers of the land there and on the Marvin Farm are still in their due diligence period. However, they called me this morning interested in 40 more acres of land, which is, you know, in a schematic way depicted on this drawing. They then gave me a proposed price for that, which is the same total price that they're paying for the 20 acres of land. And so half as much per acre. I guess two questions for you in that regard. Are you interested? So this, this is not really a viable scenario for how that would lay out on that property. The road that you see in the center is one that's going to be, going to have to be created as part of this development process. And we would envision that being a future public road that would serve that whole Marvin Farm property as a, as a business park. That, that road can't be, this, this is roughly 2,000 feet back now. That road cannot be a 2,000-foot dead end. And so if we're really going to move forward, it was one thing when they were going to go, you know, 670 feet up and ended in the cul-de-sac. That was one thing. But if they're going to proceed with all this additional land, and which, which is a substantial lift based on the price, but I'm interested in your, your guidance on that, then it will have to be as part of constructing that road to its ultimate outlet, it would seem to me, which will be Sand Creek Highway. It'll need to loop through the property and out to Sand Creek Highway ultimately. So that, that's one obstacle that's raised by this. But then the other issue is, as I say, the, the proposed price. And as you'll recall, they retraded us on the price before we entered into this purchase agreement. And now they're, they're bidding quite low on the additional land that they would, would like to acquire. This while they're still in their due diligence period, meaning that they have a chance to opt out for, you know, any reason or no reason until the end of that period, which is, runs about another month after this month. You know, about through, approximately through November. It was a 90-day due diligence period. So I'm interested in your thoughts on whether you would like me to negotiate with them for the sale of additional land out there. My presumption would be that it would be for other similar businesses to those marijuana facilities that they intended to have on the, on the 20 acres. And then if so, what your direction is on price. So at that same price, at $500,000 for 40 acres, that's 12.5 an acre. That's, that's what you pay for agricultural land, not land that's zoned industrial in, in the marijuana overlay. Very much so. Very much so.
I would like you to continue to negotiate with them. The price that they're offering just doesn't feel right to me though. So I would think that they'd be willing to continue to talk.
If I just make sure I understand, there would not be a price reduction from the $25,000 per acre on the initial 20 acres? Is that right?
That is not currently before us. Like I say, that contract is still conditional in that it's in its due diligence period. And so we may yet hear from them about this, that, or the other thing that, you know, before that period expires. But we've not heard that yet. And the title, title work came in today. I was only able to just glance at it, but it looked pretty clean, as you would expect. I mean, the title is the same as, basically as it was for the land across the street that we sold to Flourish and others.
So do you have a concern that they may come back and say they want to pay 12.5 for 60 acres?
I do have that concern.
Okay, thank you.
This is new. My initial instinct is, in, in when I sell property or when we have sold them, the use of it hasn't been very important. But i- if we're going to consider any kind of discount off the market that they made, you know, development plans have been talked about before. Things like how we're going to recoup any discounts that are given is something that would interest me. So I would have, I, I would have a problem if that purchase is simply to disrupt other development and we sold it at a discount. So something to protect that purchase price or ensure that purchase price that we're going to recoup funds quickly would give me some comfort to even consider that size of a discount.
Yeah, I agree with the other commissioners when it comes to this. Like, you know, I think we did, we stood at an olive branch to, gave them a really good price on what they offered initially. So I agree with Lab and just continue negotiating. But, you know, that land becomes a lot more valuable once it was rezoned. I mean, I mean, we, I mean, we knew that when we went and, and sold for half a million. So your concern of 12.5 for the 60 is concerning to me too. But, I mean, I could be wrong, but continue negotiating and, and see where we land. So that's, that'd be my opinion, so.
Okay, I think I have direction on that. Go to the other slide. So we've had some interest in the Whit Farm north of town. What you're seeing here, so that reddish area on the bottom of the screen, that's the area we've agreed to sell to the Humane Society. And then the rest of that is our conceptualization of how the land north of there could be divided up and, and used. The yellow's obviously a proposed road that would service it. You can't really, you know, again, the frontage is limited. And that area in the center that I don't have contained within any of those parcels is at least mostly, if not all, wetlands. And then, of course, at the top, that's the oil well area that's at the, at the top there. So we've tried to figure out three usable, usable modules of land and that, that could be portioned off. As I say, they would need a road. You can see the road will kind of clip the top of that, of the Humane Society parcel. I've, I've mentioned that to Margaret Nowey, who's working on that with them. And hopefully they understand that. I don't think it's in any way critical to their, their use of that parcel. They just need a way in. And that, and, and we continue to talk about what that, ease that road is going to look like with them. But the user we have interested is another senior living facility. And they needed about five to eight acres. And they're interested in parcel A there. They'd actually come initially with a price of 20,000 an acre for that, which is consistent with what we've been selling other land for. This land is very odd because it's zoned PUD, although there is no area plan for the PUD. So sort of like unzoned land out there. And we have to do a rezoning before it can really be used for anything. In any event, they're, they're very interested. We're right now trying to figure out how much of that area in the center really is wetland. We excluded it only, from the parcels only because we didn't feel there was any utility to it. We're trying to show them what was available in terms of buildable land. We would, we would be, and hopefully it could be used for common stormwater retention area in connection with the development of all three of the parcels on the road. But we're trying to figure out what its extent is or the, or the prospective purchasers are. And then also there are some issues in trying to understand what was actually conveyed to the, to the oil well. So we're, we're working through that right now. But I, I wanted to bring it to you in terms of the proposed price and the, and the concept and see if that was something you were interested in having me to continue to negotiate on.
So the senior living, they're interested in the parcel A? It's really an odd-shaped parcel. I mean, what are they going to do with that? Along the road?
That's a home that's in between the current senior living space and where it possibly could be a new senior living space, correct?
I think so, yes.
And I was there, two homes in there? Is that, is one of those, does anyone remember? I drove by it this weekend. Is it up for sale? I know one of those buildings was up for sale this weekend. I didn't, there are two homes in there?
Would that road then service the Humane Society as well?
Yes, that'd be their entrance.
So that road's going in no matter what because it's going to need to go in for Humane Society?
Correct. And so the questions they've had is, well, who's going to pay for that? And our answer is, you are. But maybe someone else will be around to help you by the time that day comes. You know, this could be that other user that could help them create that road. I'm not hearing any opposition to continuing to negotiate with this user, so we, we will do that. Hopefully get something to present to you in the near future. I believe those were my three items for the pre-meeting. I believe those were my three items for the pre-meeting. Turn the podium over to others at this point.
Well, it doesn't look like anybody else has anything else they'd like to discuss, so at this time we will open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Not hearing any public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned, regular city commission meeting will begin at 7:00 PM.
It is seven o'clock if everyone can have a seat. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting, October 19th, 2020. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. All commission members present.
May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October 5th, 2020, regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to pay the vouchers as presented? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Vouchers approved by unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R 20-195 from Administration, which is an authorization of a 2.5% cost of living pay increase to non-union employees retroactive to the start of the 2020-21 fiscal year. I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. The motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution R 2195 from Administration is approved by unanimous vote.
Ordinance 20-009 is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning development regulations and the zoning map by deleting property located at 1610 West Beecher Street from the B2 Community Business District and RT 2 Family Residential District and including the same in the I1 Light Industrial District and to include both properties in the overlay zone Marijuana 2 West OZM District. Is there any public comment? Are there any commissioner comments? Ordinance 20-009. Do I take a motion on that? Sorry. May I get a motion for ordinance 20-009? Sorry about that. I have a motion to adopt ordinance 20-009 from Halt with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Ordinance 20-010 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to create Article 3 of Chapter 6 entitled Feeding Certain Wild Animals. This is a first reading only, but I'm going to ask City Administrator Greg Elliott to speak on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So Commissioner Strayer asked that we add this to the agenda. You'll recall previously, we had a pre-meeting discussion about this where you were presented, among other materials, a copy of the City of Tecumseh's ordinance on feeding deer. All this, all that we did with this is we just took deer and we substituted wild animals, which we then defined as deer, geese, if I can get it from memory, skunks, raccoons, possums, and coyotes. I think I hit them all. Those are the ones that occurred to us that might be nuisance sort of animals that someone in your neighborhood might feed and, and create the deleterious effects that we're trying to avoid as described in the Purpose section of the ordinance. And we added that to Chapter 6 of the city code, which already dealt with animals in the city. And that's what's before you tonight.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to special orders. Special Order -1 is a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the proposed industrial facilities exemption certificate for Plain Wave. I now call this public hearing to order.
Good evening again. Just to, by way of explanation, for the benefit of those here who might be here for the public hearing. When you set up a district for an industrial facilities exemption, it's two-step process in terms of pursuing one. You first consider whether a property is appropriate for the district. And that can include multiple properties where you envision industrial facilities might be built. And then, once that district is approved, individual projects come in for these certificates. And so, some time back, you did approve the Plain Wave property as a district. And so, it's already a district. And now, they're presenting a certificate for, a request for a certificate for a proposed new building, which I believe is about 6,000 square feet that they're going to be constructing on the campus. And Kevin Ayad is here to speak specifically to that if you have questions. And our assessor, Kristen Brown, is also on the Zoom feed. And she can give you more particulars on the process. But it's a 12-year exemption certificate. That's what we've always granted in the past. And it's kind of open and shut once you create the district, as long as it's qualifying, a qualifying project.
This is a public hearing, so at this time, anybody that would like to speak may do so. Hearing no comments, I call this, I close this public hearing. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R 20-189 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to approve the application from Plain Wave for an industrial facilities exemption certificate. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-190 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $15,157.25 from the Center for Tech and Civic Life for operating and staffing the November 3rd, 2020 election. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-191 is from the City Clerk. It is a resolution to approve a new medical marijuana facility permit for WPL Industries LLC. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-192 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to authorize Adrian College to place and maintain the concrete in the Adrian College Boulevard, Charles Street, Michigan Avenue Roundabout with the Adrian College AC symbol. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-193 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to approve a yard waste fee schedule. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-194 is from Parks and Engineering. It is a resolution to approve the acquisition and maintenance of an alley bordered by Butler, Roswell, Maple, and Elm Streets. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R 20-195 is from Administration. It is the authorization of a 2.5% cost of living pay increase to non-union employees retroactive to the start of the 2020-21 fiscal year. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gauss. Commissioner Castleberry. Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Halt. Commissioner Roberts. Commissioner Watson. Resolution R 2195 from Administration for the authorization of a 2.5% cost of living pay increase to non-union employees retroactive to the start of the 2020-21 fiscal year is approved by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Are there any comments from the commissioners on those reports? At this time, it is public comment time. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And please state your name and address. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Eric Kennedy, 1338 West Malmi. And tonight, I'm here to talk about chickens. I find it odd that a select few people are using their position in the community to set the narrative on this issue. I think the real issue with the city is building the tax base. We do not have a expense problem, we have a revenue problem. So one things that you guys do, things that you do well and have done well is reduce blight, reducing nuisances such as the camping on the trail, expanding businesses like Plainwave and such. But I have some alarming statistics for you. The average household income in the City of Adrian is $37,000. 52% of housing are rentals. Only 83% of residents over 25 have a high school diploma or better. So there's other things that you can do by attracting more homeownership and reducing the percentage of... However, all these nuisances that are around the city or neighborhoods, there's such things as daycares, blight, animals, excess vehicles in yards, so on and so forth. All those things affect property sales. It is a non-trackable statistic. If you go to sell a house at $100,000 and they see junk cars in the yard next door, are they going to pay you $100,000? Or are they going to lowball you at 90? That's $10,000 to that seller. The other thing, safety. The CDC has recently stated, as recent as last month, outbreaks of salmonella are a direct result of backyard chickens. The state of Michigan is number three in the nation. So my suggestion to you is to allow, no different than Tecumseh, allow the citizens to vote. Tecumseh in 2015, according to the Lenawee County Clerk, was a 57% no. Let the people speak.
Hello, I have a comment, if I can make one.
Please state your name and address.
I'm McKean Ramo, sign up 422 South Winter. I've told you this numerous times, so, well, anyways, I just wanted to question the DARA lines. Why they're in the middle of the sidewalk in numerous parts of the city? Granted, I didn't follow the entire perimeter, but most of the lines I saw, if not all, were right in the middle of the sidewalk. I presume people are going to be walking around with their drinks. That was part of the idea of it, so I'm kind of confused about the line being in the middle of the sidewalk. Seems like it had just been put at the edge. And also, how much that might be an issue for it being in front of certain driveways. And again, if someone steps out of that, how strict is it going to be? And just as far as people visiting the city, with how wonky the line is, I don't think it looks particularly good. That's just my thoughts on it. Thank you for your time.
I was allowing a little more time to make sure nobody on Zoom was trying to get in to have a public comment. Hearing no more public comments, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments?
I have a couple of thank yous that I'd like to express tonight. First is to Mr. Matt Tomaszewski for the dog park. I just want to thank him for taking the vision that I had and making it a reality. Every time I go by there, there's a couple of dogs, and it's always in use. So it's great to have that as an amenity for our residents. Thank you to Drake Lowly and the Murrays for the use of your equipment in this building. It's very nice. And to Plainwave, Eric with Plainwave. Really appreciate that you continue to support the city and the development in there. And in regards to the chickens and other zoning issues, the zoning commission meeting will be on Tuesday, November 10th at 7:00. If you are interested in talking about the amendment to the ordinance, it's being moved a week back due to the election. So just keep that in mind.
I would like to make one quick comment, and that is that I think that the blue line around the DARA district was a great idea. If you put up signage, you would be really limited to where you could put those signs. And people who were out walking around possibly would never see them. So this is, there's no way you can miss the blue line. And I think it was a really good idea, and I'd be willing to bet that other cities follow our lead moving forward.
Real quick. All right, all right. Real quick, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Castleberry to her first official meeting. And I think she's going to fit right in and bring a lot of insight, so welcome.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.